This was a later version. It was originally another plat- and he called an error, so they fixed it. But the new one that's in the packet should be more- it is correct, but it should just be more accurate.
Good evening. Thank you for joining us for our October 26th, 2015 legislative meeting. We have a couple of special guests in the audience. We'll get to those in just a moment. But a very special guest we have for our invocation this evening is, I'm sorry, Reverend James Riley. That's sliding off my screen. From Nelson Memorial United Methodist Church. So if you would join me in welcoming Reverend Riley. He's going to do our invocation for us.
Thank you. As you just heard, I am Jim Riley from Hebron, Maryland, the great downtown city of Hebron, which is not Salisbury. When I was invited to open this meeting, I wondered, why would they ask someone who is not from Salisbury to open the Salisbury Town Council? And then I remembered, people from Hebron shop in Salisbury. People from Hebron visit the zoo in Salisbury. People from Hebron come to Salisbury for Third Friday. Nobody works in Hebron, but everybody who lives in Hebron works in Salisbury. And so I thank you who are on this council for making Salisbury a place that blesses all those who live in the county and the surrounding areas of Salisbury. So with that in mind, will you please join me in prayer? Lord God of all time and all places and all people, I thank you that you have brought us together as a community of those who care for each other and those who live with each other. I thank you for those who have agreed to serve on this council, to bless all of us who live not just in this city, but in this entire area. And I pray that this meeting tonight would glorify you, would bless all of those who live in this community, and would serve all in this area. We pray this in the name of Jesus our Lord. Amen. And amen.
Thank you, Reverend. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we get to our special, special guest, a couple of housekeeping items. In the case of emergency, there are stairs out the door to the right at the end of the hall and out the door all the way to the left around to the end of the hall. Please don't use the elevator in case of emergency. If you have a cellphone, if you would please silence that or turn it off at this time, that would be very great. We don't want to interrupt anybody and extend anything- extend our meeting longer than we need to. So, thank you very much for being here. And first up, I believe we have a proclamation for October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. As we see a lot of pink around during the month, and it's a very nice reminder. We sometimes need to be reminded at other times during the year, but if we make sure that everybody thinks about it enough during October, hopefully that carries over. And we have Sue Revel from Women Supporting Women with us tonight. And Ms. Glantz has a proclamation and a certificate of appreciation.
Good evening. On behalf of Mayor Irtin, who could not be here this evening, we have a proclamation. Whereas breast cancer, one of the most common cancers among American women, affects roughly 230,000 women as well as 2,300 men each year and is responsible for more than 40,000 deaths annually in the United States. And whereas breast cancer strikes people of all races, ages, income levels, and we must raise awareness of this disease and its symptoms so we can more easily identify it and more effectively treat it. And whereas this month, as we honor those precious lives who were tragically cut short by breast cancer, let us arm ourselves with the best knowledge, tools, and resources available to fight this devastating disease. And whereas regular screenings and quality care are vital to improving outcomes for millions of people, and during National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we remember those who cancer took from us far too soon, and recommit our promise of finding a cure in tribute to them, their families, and our medical professionals. Now, therefore, on behalf of James Irtin Jr., Mayor of City of Salisbury, I do hereby proclaim October 2015 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city and encourage our citizens, government agencies, private businesses, nonprofit organizations, and all other interested groups to join in activities that will increase breast cancer awareness and prevention to ensure all people enjoy the extraordinary gift of a long, happy, and healthy life.
I'd like to thank the city council for this proclamation and acknowledging Breast Cancer Awareness Month for October. But as Laura says, I'd like to remind everybody that breast cancer can be diagnosed any day of the year. So, early detection is absolutely critical so that we can save lives. So, I would like to remind women to get your mammograms. And as the proclamation said, men do get breast cancer. So, breast self-exam is important. Get to know your body. And hopefully, you will never have to come visit us, but if you do, we're Women Supporting Women out Route 50 at East Park Professional Center. And we're there for you, a local organization. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Revel. What you do is important. When that diagnosis does come for some people, which it inevitably does, Women Supporting Women is there for you. They've been tremendous help to a lot of people in our community. Unfortunately, they've needed that, but fortunately, they've had Sue and her group to be there for them. Thank you. Next up, we have Just Zooit. Ms. Basset and Friends. We have our zoo director, Ralph Pylon, joining as well. And she's going to explain to us again what Just Zooit is and remind people who may not remember from last year and inform the rest. Thank you.
Thank you for having us. I am with the Delmarva Zoological Society, which hopefully you guys know is the nonprofit that raises money for capital improvement projects at our zoo. And Just Zooit is our fall campaign that we do. It's now in our fifth year. We're very proud of it. We have some important partners. We partner with the area schools, public and private. And we challenge the kids to go out and collect coins in our little Just Zooit cans that are donated here locally by Pepsi. Very proud of that. So, we ask them to go out, if they happen to go out trick-or-treating, and bring their cans along. So, we want to remind everyone, they might want to have a bowl of candy out, they might also want to have a bowl of coins out, or dollar bills, whatever you can afford would be great. Dollar bills, they do fit in here. Checks from Grandma fit in here very nicely. So, we do, we love, we've been out all day at schools. We have a little bear mascot that we take out. And the most rewarding thing is the opportunity to see the smiles on the kids' faces and how much they love the zoo. And they love visiting the zoo. And they love visiting our new baby bear at the zoo, Alba, who has just been a delight since she was born last January at the zoo. And our focus this year is on our bear exhibit, is on the Andean bears. So, what we're doing this year is the class that raises the most money for us from Wycomico County. And from each county, we reward one class, and we bring them to the zoo for the day. And we treat them like VIPs. And we have them sort of a behind-the-scenes tour. And we give them a pizza party and cupcakes and treat them like rock stars. And they get very excited about this prize. And this year, the folks at the zoo came up with an even better idea. So, our grand prize this year, the class that raises the most in four counties, because that's now, Just Zooit has spread to four counties. We've got schools in all four counties participating. So, the class that raises the most in all four counties, we're going to actually bring them inside the bear exhibit. This was Ralph's idea. So, as someone who's in PR, everything's going to go great. It's going to be fabulous. The bears will be locked up. So, but they're going to get to come inside. They're going to meet the zookeepers who take care of our bears. They're going to learn how the bears are fed, the different stuff that they use to play with the bears, and get a group photo inside that bear exhibit, which, as you know, is very rare. I'm sure none of you have been inside the bear exhibit. Maybe you can ask that the next time you're over at the zoo. But we're very appreciative of that. We have some great local community partners. I see Mr. Heath. We have Lower Shore Enterprises helps us get all those cans ready. They wrap the labels on the cans. They put them in the boxes for us. They do a fabulous job. So, we're just over there today, and they love this project as well. Forshore Federal is our community bank partner that counts all of the money. So, we open up all of the cans, and they do all the counting. And we're talking several tons of coins. So, thank you to everyone at Forshore Federal who does that for us. And many of our other sponsors, we've got some other great sponsors. So, we just want to thank you guys. And I'm always looking for someone who's willing to wear the bear suit at any of our schools. It is a, for some people, it's a bucket list item. So, I'm here to, you know, to cross it off for you. We had a county council member do it today, and I've got a delegate doing it by the end of the week.
I thought that was a waitlist for that.
No. Laura, I can get you in for sure. So, we have lots of opportunities. If anyone in the community would like to contact me, I have a bear suit waiting for you with your name on it. And it is so much fun. And it is, and it's a blast to see how much everyone in this community loves your zoo. And they're taking great care of it over there. And we're doing the best we can to try to keep it, maintain it, and hopefully have it here for generations to come. So, thank you all. Any questions you have about Just Zooit? Oh, one more, one other thing, I'm sorry. You can donate online. If you know that your son or grandchild is in a class, you can go online and actually make an online contribution that might help tip them over. And we can take chaperones with us. So, if you want to see inside the bear exhibit, I suggest you go online and make a donation to your kid's class today, and we'll be happy to show it off. So, any questions from you all?
What's the website where they can go?
The website is very good, is renewthezoo.com. And click on our Just Zooit page. And it's got details of what it's all about. And you can click on how to donate right online right there. And this is Jane Seagraves, by the way. She is one of our board members. And we are supported by a very strong board and very active in the community, so.
Do you have the community cans this time that are in retail locations?
We are not doing that this time. That was just not as, you know, not as productive as focusing on this. And I should say that this is our fifth year doing it. And in nickels, dimes, and quarters, we've raised over $120,000 from the kids in this community who love their zoo. So, very proud of that effort and looking forward to what happens and who the big winner is this year, so.
Public Works is looking forward to unwrapping.
That's another great partner. Our Public Works crew comes over and helps us open up all those cans. And they get to see the $100 bill that comes out every now and again, or the check from Grandma that comes out every now and again. So, it's fun. It's all fun.
Amazing process that they have worked out. It's really good between DZS, the Public Works, and everybody. Thank you very much for participating. And thank you very much for bringing this opportunity every year to help our zoo.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Oh, I'm sorry. Acclamation. Oh, I'm sorry. Maybe I did this wrong. Did I give you the right one? I think there was one for Revel and one for women's, one for the over. Okay. We don't have one.
You can do this later.
I got a picture of it, I think. Okay. Thank you, guys. Very much.
I'll share my proclamation.
When they come back to tell us how much they raised this year, we'll get some more. Yeah. Okay, now that we have all that straight, thank you for indulging us. Next, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda. Is someone present?
Second.
Whose initials or what? Sorry about that. Right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. And a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Removed.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. On the consent agenda, we have some budget session minutes, May 14th, May 18th, May 21st, and June 1st. We have the September 8th closed session minutes, September 21st work session minutes, September 28th regular meeting minutes, and October 5th closed session and work session minutes. We have Resolution Number 2559 approving a Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development Main Street Improvement Program Grant Application for funds to provide for a downtown ambassador program and authorize the mayor to sign all documents necessary for the receipt of the funds. Resolution Number 2560, accepting federal grant funds awarded through the Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program to purchase protective vests for each police officer. Resolution Number 2561, approving the reappointment of Joel Olive to the Central City District Commission for term ending September 30th, 2017. Resolution Number 2562, approving the reappointment of Jacob Holloway to the Central City District Commission for term ending September 30th, 2017. Resolution Number 2563, approving the appointment of Mary Buffington to the Traffic and Safety Committee for the term ending July 31st, 2017. And Resolution Number 2564, accepting the donation of a staff vehicle, two mobile command vehicles, a rescue boat, motor, trailer, and portable radios and equipment for the Salisbury Fire Department to use in efforts to enhance its capabilities in providing the effective and efficient delivery of fire rescue and emergency medical services, and to improve the quality of life for the citizens of Salisbury and the Salisbury Fire District. And that's it.
Quite a consent agenda.
Yes, it is.
Quite a mouthful. Any discussion?
Couple things. Thank you to those who volunteered for the boards and commissions. Your service is very much needed. I have a question about the donation, staff vehicles, two mobile command vehicles, rescue boat, motor, trailer. I think the public would probably like to know what those vehicles are, where they came from.
Chief Hoppus?
If you don't mind, chief.
Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity. The mobile command vehicles are simply used for the operation, operational awareness of the organization as we respond to operational events. They become the chief, the chief on duty drives those vehicles, including the backup chiefs. That's why there's two. And they take initial incident command of all of our incidents of significance in the city. And those are, then the fire boat, obviously, not obviously, it takes the place of a inflated, inflatable rescue, fire rescue boat that we had that is out of service because it just was old.
Zodiac, right?
The Zodiac, that's correct. And it takes the place of that. So, it's a replacement vehicle. And I'm trying to remember what the other unit was. But each of these projects were funded through taxpayer funds provided to our volunteer component managed through, by code requirement, managed by the volunteer executive board, which is chaired by Deputy Chief Lee Smith, our chief volunteer, along with the other three station chiefs. They work through our capital improvement plan and our strategic plan to replace certain vehicles given those monies, putting those monies to use for the citizens in which it was intended to do.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the award of bids. So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Miller, thank you for joining us. You're welcome.
The first item we have this evening is an award of bid for Contract 107-16. This is the purchase of a CCTV for the Water Utilities Division. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Department of Public Works, Water Utilities Division, to purchase a Roush Electronics CCTV through Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems utilizing a cooperative purchasing program. It's called HGAC Buy. Per Section SC 16-3, the General Policy of Competitive Bidding: Exceptions of the City of Salisbury Charter, competitive bidding procedures performed by the City of Salisbury are not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance, such as, number nine, contracts in which the city receives a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. This charter designation, therefore, allows the City of Salisbury to participate in cooperative purchasing activities such as HGAC Buy. This is called the Houston-Galveston Area Council, and that's a unit of local government and a political subdivision of the state of Texas. All products offered through HGAC Buy have been awarded by virtue of a public competitive process. The contracts awarded by the HGAC Board are then made available to local governments nationwide through HGAC Buy Cooperative Purchasing Program. The City of Salisbury is a longstanding member of HGAC Buy through the execution of what's called an inter-local contract, and that sets out the conditions, requirements, and the process of the procurement. The procurement department has obtained a copy of the Roush Electronics USA contract, which was competitively bid through HGAC Buy, and has confirmed the validity of the contract and that the prices quoted by Mid-Atlantic do not exceed the HGAC contract prices. There are sufficient funds in the noted account to purchase the vehicle, or vehicle, CCTV, sorry. The procurement department requests council's approval to award this contract, Contract 107-16, to Mid-Atlantic Waste Systems in the amount of $209,904.
Next. Do you want to do the other one?
Oh, sure. Yep. The next is a change order. It's change order number one to RFP 14-15. That's for the Salisbury Bike Route, the Wayfinding and Safety Enhancements Project. The City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from the Department of Planning and Zoning to issue change order number one to RFP 14-15, the Salisbury Bike Route. The original solicitation for RFP 14-15 was awarded to Arrow Consulting in June with a scope of work that specified the following. It would include design services for, excuse me, for pavement markings and signage for the Salisbury Urban Greenway. It would include design services for wayfinding on the orange and red routes, including development of design guidelines. And it would include design services for four kiosks along the Salisbury Bike Route. Funds then became available in FY '16 to retain consulting services for the preparation of the Salisbury Bike Route Master Plan. Given the overlap in process, the ability to ensure consistency between the two bicycle planning projects, and the cost-saving potential of retaining the current engineering firm to perform these additional services, the procurement department recommends that it is in the best interest of the City of Salisbury to award this change order to Arrow Consulting to avoid duplicity of procedure. There are sufficient funds in the noted account to support the change order. The procurement department requests council's approval to award change order number one to Arrow Consulting in the amount of $28,835.
I have one question about that one. Was this part of the project, the consulting, was that an ad alternate on the original RFP?
No.
No, okay. Because we-
No, we didn't even know about that potential scope of work at that time.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next, I'll entertain a motion for Resolution Number 2565, Malone College Avenue and Snow Hill Road Annexation, setting the date for a public hearing. It's presented by Ms. Glantz.
Removed.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Glantz.
Good evening again. Resolution Number 2565, a resolution of the City of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the City of Salisbury of certain area of land situate contiguous and to binding upon the northerly and westerly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as the Malone-Snow Hill Road Annexation, and the application of the city zoning classification to the same area being an area located on the northerly side of and binding upon East College Avenue in the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Snow Hill Road and East College Avenue.
Thank you. And this sets the public hearing for, what's that date?
December 14th.
December 18th?
It's the 14th. I think it's the 14th.
I'm sorry. Mr. Lennox, do you have?
December 14th.
14th, okay. I'm not finding it, but okay. It's December 14th at 6:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approval of Resolution Number 2565, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you very much. And next, I'll entertain a motion for Resolution Number 2566, also related to the annexation. This is approval of the annexation agreement slash plan.
Removed.
Ms. Glantz, welcome back.
Mr. Tillman pointed out just one typo that we need to fill in. Can I yield to you, Mr. Tillman, to let everyone know where that is? Exhibit B?
Yes, with regard to exhibit-
Go my review first. Yeah, if you'd do the overview first, the title first, and then we can get into that.
Okay. It's going to sound very similar. Resolution of the City of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the City of Salisbury of certain area of land situate continuous to and binding upon the northerly and westerly corporate limit of the City of Salisbury to be known as the Malone-Snow Hill Road Annexation, and the application of the city zoning classification to the same area being an area located on the northerly side of and binding upon East College Avenue in the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Snow Hill Road and East College Avenue. Thank you. Mr. Tillman?
Yes, just with regard to Exhibit B, the report of annexation plan, the fourth bullet, apparently, it looks like it was just a typo, but it should read "at a city council meeting," not "a city county meeting."
Yes, I saw that.
And that should appear that way.
There's another instance of that.
Apparently, that was in the form that's been used before, so.
There's another instance of that on, in, oh, no. No, that was the one I had marked. Okay.
It appears in both resolutions, but it clearly should be corrected. And the meeting date would be this evening.
Right, and the date would be inserted. Do we need to insert the date now as well?
I don't think we need to establish it here. You just need to make sure you set that meeting date, as I assume it's going to be the same night as the other resolution.
Okay. So, someone want to make the motion to make that change? So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of making the adjustment, as pointed out in that fourth bullet on Exhibit B by Mr. Tillman, to change "a city county" to "at a city council" meeting? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And the date of that meeting shall be set at December 14th at 6:00 PM. Correct. I'll make sure I get the right date. I'm determined it's going to be the 18th. We'll have to come another night, apparently. Okay. Are there any other questions related to this resolution? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approval of Resolution Number 2566, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you very much. And next, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance Number 2360 for first reading for the housing standards of the City Salisbury Code to change the building official to housing official. So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, this is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury to amend Chapter 15.24 Housing Standards of the Salisbury City Code to change building official to housing official and to change Boca Mechanical Code to National Fuel Gas Code and to otherwise correct portions of the text. The, if you look through there, the changes that are described in the title are what was done. The only addition that isn't actually described in the title and is more of a cleanup thing is the reference to the city treasurer should be Director of Internal Services. And that appears on line 38. That's pretty much, it's a cleanup provision.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approval of ordinance Number 2360 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Chair votes aye, thank you. Next up is motion to approve, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2361 for first reading, to amend Chapter 8.04.050 of the Salisbury Municipal Code to provide for enforcement of this section by the Chief of Police, Fire Chief, and Director of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance. This has to do with the false alarms, correct? Just language cleanup.
Yes.
Thank you.
So moved.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, the purpose of this amendment, I guess, is the substance of it, you can see in line 38, under, it says, "The Chief of Police and the Fire Chief will maintain accurate records of false alarm occurrences. A bill will be sent by mailing said bill to the property owner of record of the subject location, the designated agent, if any, in the occupant of the property, if known to the Director of Internal Services." And then it, the substance here is that the Director of Internal Services will send bills for occurrences one to five, basically occurrences where there is no fine involved. And then after that, the Director of Neighborhood Services will pick up with occurrences beginning with six or more. And that's pretty much it.
Because the internal services director is not authorized to issue fines, is that the substance?
Right, and he's going to be sending the notices and keeping track of it, and after that, once the fines are issued, it'll be kept track of by the authority who would issue fines.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on that one? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approval of ordinance number 2361 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, chair votes aye. Next up is a motion to approve, I'll entertain a motion to approve, ordinance number 2362 for first reading for budget amendment for the FY '16 general fund to appropriate funds for replacement of survey equipment.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Tillman?
Whereas the city has a surveying team as part of the Department of Public Works under the direction of the city surveyor, and whereas the city surveyor utilizes a robotic total station to locate property corners and for construction stakeout, boundary surveys, as-built surveys, topographical surveys, and GIS applications, and whereas the robotic total station unit was recently damaged beyond repair, and since it was an unforeseen expense, it is not budgeted. And whereas the cost to replace the surveying equipment is $29,000, and whereas the portion above the $10,000 deductible will be reimbursed by Legit after the new equipment has been purchased and paid for, now therefore be it ordained by the City of Salisbury that the city's fiscal year 2016 general fund budget be amended as follows. Increase in the insurance proceeds account 01000-456935 by $19,000. Increase in the current surplus available account 01000-469810 by $10,000, with an increase in the Public Works Engineering Department budget of $29,000.
Okay, so we do have some legit coverage, we just have a deductible of $10,000?
Yes.
That the budget amendment covers. Okay? Any other, yes?
Mr. Moles? Could I ask you to come on?
Good evening.
Good evening, all.
You look too comfortable.
Sorry.
What would you do if you didn't have this piece of equipment?
What we'd probably have to try to do would be rent it, but then with any type of equipment like this, there's a learning curve on it, having to go through it, and then not always get the same model the next time you have to rent it, so it would, it would be kind of difficult to manage with it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approval of ordinance number 2362 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2363, first reading, budget amendment to appropriate funds for the purchase and installation of fencing for Phase One of the Salisbury Skate Park.
So moved.
Second.
Whereas the construction of Phase One of the Salisbury Skate Park at 921 South Park Drive is underway, and whereas the Salisbury Skate Park Phase One application that was approved by DNR in 2013 included a small amount of funding for the purchase and installation of some fencing along the street side of the site, and whereas the most recent cost estimate for the fencing along the street side of the site is approximately $5,000 more than the amount that was funded by the grant, and whereas the city's FY 2016 budget does not contain an appropriation sufficient to cover this expense, now therefore be ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, that the city's fiscal year 2016 general fund budget be and is hereby amended as follows, with an increase in the current surplus available account 01000-469810 by $5,000, and an increased transfer to community development account 91001-59114 by an equivalent amount.
Ms. Dan, could you share with us, just for the public's benefit, what we're doing with this fence? Because we're not fencing the whole thing in, and most, I think, I believe everything else for the skate park has been funded either by fundraising through the skate park committee or from grants, correct?
That's correct, yes. And this $10,000 will buy us the fencing just along the street side, the South Park Drive side, so if a skateboard was to go wild, it would not clip either a car or a pedestrian who might be walking down the greenway. And then once Phase Two is constructed, we'll come back and complete the fencing and put in the electronic security gate so that we can truly secure the facility.
Any other questions?
Yes, we mentioned fundraising, and fundraising is a big part of how this all came about. Is fundraising continuing at this point?
Yes, yes.
And you have events that are planned that?
Salisbury Skate Park Committee is continually doing their fundraising. The latest one was the big event over there at, they had the Skate Deck Art Show at Tony Week Photography, coupled with the concert at Headquarters Live. So they're continually, and they sold a bunch of bricks which came in recently that will be put into one of the elements, memorial bricks. Well, they didn't have to be memorial, they could say, you know, anything that the skaters wanted them to say, but you could purchase a brick to be a part of the skate park, you know, that's, be sort of one, a part of one of the elements, so that's pretty cool.
That's a nice feature. That's always a nice feature with things like that.
Yes, so yes, they are continually working on their fundraising efforts and trying to raise additional funds for Phase Two.
Great. Thank you.
Like the bricks a lot better than carving in the concrete.
Yeah. Definitely.
Mr. Heath?
I just want you to say, explain to why we are fencing this and why we're going to enclose it when we get enough funding for the next phase for the public, because, you know, fencing is always like keeping certain people out. I don't want that impression.
No, no.
Explain that, please.
It's a, it's a question, this is obviously a very expensive facility, and one that it's taken us eight years to reach the point where we're finally going to be able to have it. And so you do have to be able to protect against malicious mischief, vandalism, you know, there are people occasionally who just run around looking for things to destroy, and we do have to be able to protect against that. But the electronic security gate will be operated for the hours that the park is open, so it will open automatically at 8:00 AM when the park opens, and then it will close at dusk. That's when all of our park and playground facilities close, and that obviously will be adjusted depending upon the time of the year, obviously, dusk in the middle of winter is much earlier than it is late in summer.
Unfortunately.
So it's just a question of being able to protect this very expensive amenity and preserve it for the skaters for the future.
And also, at the public, you know, also, that they have to register their skateboards, is that correct?
Yes, thank you, good point. Posted on the city website, there, the skate park information is in a couple of different locations, and you do have to be registered to skate in the skate park. That means you have to fill out a release and waiver form, which is typical for most public skating facilities. So you just go online, you download the form, you fill it out, mail it in, we'll check it over, and we'll mail you your sticker. So very simple process, and that way everybody has their sticker on their helmet, and they're good to go. And helmets are mandatory.
Yes, helmets are mandatory, in case you missed them.
Yes.
Do we have an estimated completion date?
Right now, we're looking at maybe early to mid-November, is what we're shooting for.
Okay, Mr. Heath, you have a question?
No, it's, it's fine, thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions, comments?
I just wanted to say that this is for people's safety, not to keep them out, it's for safety.
Absolutely.
For safety and protection of the public.
Yes.
I just want to iterate that.
Absolutely.
Skateboarding those features in the dark is not safe.
No, no, that's.
Closing it at dusk is a wise move.
Dangerous proposition, to say the least.
And it is dark out there.
And it is very dark out there, yes.
It would be for me at any time at dusk, but for everybody at dusk.
Me too.
Okay. Seeing none, I'll call a question, no other questions, I'll call the question to approve ordinance number 2363 for first reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Dan. And Mr. Tillman, we have come to the end. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2364 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, this is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury amending Chapter Three Revenue and Finance of the City Code by adding Chapter 3.22 for the purpose of establishing an advanced telecommunications system property tax credit. Whereas Section 9-228 Tax Property Article of the Annotated Code gives counties and municipalities the option to offer a tax credit on real property for renovations, commercial or residential buildings, to meet state-of-the-art communications and utility standards for accommodating advanced computer and telecommunications systems. And whereas the City of Salisbury has an interest in incentivizing the revitalization of the downtown, and whereas the enabling legislation within the Annotated Code of Maryland gives the municipality the ability to define the eligible area for this tax credit as within areas that are designed as sustainable communities, and whereas the downtown historic district as defined in the Salisbury Code, 17.60, falls within the Salisbury Sustainable Community, and whereas the city will be installing fiber-optic cables in the downtown to support and encourage the use of, usage of advanced computer and telecommunications system in the downtown, and whereas an advanced telecommunications system property tax credit will further the city's aim of revitalizing the downtown generally and encouraging the usage of advanced telecommunications system technology. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that Chapter Three be amended by the addition of Chapter 3.22 as set forth herein. And the ordinance then goes on to define the licensed, what a licensed appraiser would be. Would you like me to read all of that, or?
No, I don't think that's necessary.
It defines, okay, it defines the cost of the quality renovations, the eligible area, which we already mentioned, is downtown historic district, and qualifying renovations. And basically, there, there's going to be a mandatory provision in here requiring that an appraiser take a look at this and determine what each, I mean, excuse me, what each building would be eligible for. Then the, the tax credit, once given, would be limited to the lesser of 10% of the cost of the qualifying renovations to a commercial or residential building to meet state-of-the-art communication and utility standards, or the City of Salisbury property tax otherwise due for any particular taxable year. I found, I mean, there, I, since the last work session, I hadn't gotten a chance to review this again before it was in the book. There are a couple of little typos, which I don't think you need to worry about between lines 66 and 73. The only thing I did want to bring to your attention is if you go back to line 96, it says the credit shall apply in each of the 10 taxable years at the beginning of the fiscal year following the final approval in accordance with subsection D2. And I thought you may not want to mandate that it will be for 10 years, and I think that that language kind of does that. I thought you might prefer the language that the credit shall apply for the 10, for up to 10 years, beginning, for up to 10 years at the beginning of the fiscal year following the final approval in accordance with subsection D.
Makes me a little happier, yeah, thank you.
That, that way, if the council decides three years from now that they can't afford it, you have the option of canceling it. The state law only requires you to limit it to no more than 10 years, but, so if you, if you don't object, then I would recommend that we make that change. Thank you.
Okay, someone want to make the motion?
I'll move to amend the wording.
Second.
I'll go for a second.
Okay, I heard Ms. Shields first. Any other discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment to modify, oops, which line was that, 96, line 96, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any other questions on the ordinance? I just have one. Do we have a plan to notify people downtown, the businesses downtown, the building owners as we get the broadband in and how we're going to implement this?
The actual implementation's going to be done by Ms. Kordakowski, and I'll be working with her. We, we aren't timing it precisely upon the one gigabit installation, as it says in there, I think, January 1st, 2016. So if someone wants to do something beforehand, but I'm actually going to be working with, I will be working with Ms. Kordakowski to put together some type of pamphlet that has information, and generally pamphlet, generally a pamphlet with information on our tax credits, because at this point, we're up to about six or seven between state and local tax credits. So, yeah.
Great, thank you. What I've found is that a lot of people downtown or in other areas, we have credits, we have programs, and they will say, if only we had, well, we do, and they don't necessarily know about them, so we need to make sure that that's well-publicized and shared with people that are impacted by that, so. No, seeing no other questions, I'll call the question for ordinance number 2364 to approve upon first reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, chair votes aye, thank you very much. I don't have anything for public comments. Okay, right, I just want to remind everyone that next Tuesday, there is no meeting on Monday for the city council, and Tuesday, November 3rd, it's this coming Tuesday, it's here already, is election day in the City of Salisbury, and I encourage you to get informed, make sure you know which district you're in. If you don't know, you can contact the city clerk or look online. You should have received your voter registration card with your new district on it. If you didn't, you need to call the elections board right away. And the polls are open from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and on your card will tell you where your polling place is. Please get out and vote. This is your chance to get involved and make a difference in what we do here and who's doing it, and you have a right to vote, but you also have a responsibility, in my opinion. So I really hope that everyone will take advantage of that and get out to vote, even in District Five, where there's no opposition in either race. So, thank you very much. This is, I guess, the last meeting for this council as it stands right now. It's been my pleasure to serve with all of you, and I appreciate it, and good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Thanks again for coming out.
No? Thank you for coming and staying, yeah.
Thank you very much.
I don't know what that's.